And the demolition waste will be built by the load of the gate, just so that there's, you know, some footing for the staff to be able to explain how to build. And I kind of equated this to some of the assessments we do with like the TB district. I think it should be ultimately incumbent upon property owners to make sure that they're being built correctly and to notify the city of changes to their property that would impact any of their building. The TB district kind of does it that way, and I think that works fairly well. I also think that for sake of simplicity, the corrections, refunds, et cetera, should be limited to a timeframe. Once again, the TB district assessment, if I'm not mistaken, can only be reviewed for the prior three years. If someone owns property for decades and decades and there's been a problem, I think if nobody's addressed that, at least the vote party's open quite a bit, and I think there should be some kind of limit on that. Not addressing these issues in some fashion leaves the city as an entity open to some legal risk, I believe. I would encourage the council to address the landfill buildings, well as the business license system. It will take time to sort out both, and I don't think we have the staff or time to sort them out consecutively. But if the council could decide which one's most urgent and address those issues first, I think sorting out both would do a lot for the amount of time the staff has to deal with these items and would improve the operation of the community for citizens as well as for future development. And, I mean, we've had some of these systems in place for a lot of projects, and any of us have been involved with the city. And the way business is done has kind of changed, and I think it's time to look at how we can make that more effective. Those are my reports. So. Moving on to item six. The mayor will recess. The mayor will recess the regular city council meeting for a public hearing at 5:30 PM on following topics. Item one, council members' city treasurer trust, public hearing, discussion only, adoption of dependent budget for this year ending June 30th, 2022, as final. Budget to be submitted to Department of Taxation for someone to RS 354 dot five nine. It's a public hearing, and we'll have a discussion from the council and from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I just got the tenant's budget a few minutes before the meeting. Nevada Open Meeting Law says all materials should be presented at the minimum three days prior to the meeting. We're failing to do that, not just with this particular budget, but with other items that you need to correct that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing on close public hearing, moving on to item seven, discussion possible action. Items pertaining to the public hearing. Item one, council members' city treasurer trust, discussion for possible action, adoption of dependent budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, as final. Budget to be submitted to Department of Taxation for someone to RS 354 dot five nine.
Okay.
Just your mic, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so as we go through this budget, I've kind of... Okay, sure, I'm sorry, that's hurting. What I usually like to go to is actually page seven, that gives you an overview of all of the non-enterprise funds. That page seven shows the estimated fund balances that we projected for this fiscal year, and now again, we've got the revenues consolidated in. And then if you flip over to page eight, that consolidates all of the different expenses and what our estimated fund balances are going to be. And do you have any questions, Thomas?
The budget stabilization is in this 400,000.
Yes, that's true. The one thing we have, we keep it separate, and our books is a separate fund, but our budget stabilization is included in the general funds beginning in the fund balance. And we have just over 136,000 in there right now.
How do you feel the department heads look at their expenses? Were they aligned, much conflict with them?
No, I didn't. Usually, you know, I send it out in January, and say, shoot for the moon, and we'll turn it down. I think most of them, they know. They know what they need. We go over it, we tweak as needed, and we discuss it, but for the most part, most of them all came in pretty reasonably and brought a backup for requests on capital improvement and, you know, they wanted to stand on.
Can't page seven, your beginning fund balances is the end of June. That was pretty good the way it rolled forward, realizing there's still some months, two months, two and a half months away. You know, most of all, to departments of the general fund and the streets, is that rolling in the pattern where you see it's pretty close to that?
Yeah, I thought they were comfortable with that.
It's a pretty healthy balance.
Yeah.
And just for the council's end, but could you describe what we're doing with that fire unit agreement that they don't have approved?
Yes, if you go to page 10, this is a list of the general funds revenue. What I have done is, because I kind of was waiting to see what the commission did yesterday, and of course, that didn't really get settled, I've taken the money out of the agreement. I've just put it at zero for the county, so if they don't want to go with the city, I don't have that ready budget. If we go with it, I can always augment it back in. It's easier to put in than take out and then tell everybody they can't spend money. And then also, an effect of that was I reduced the fire ambulance service revenue by 100,000 just to take into account, we won't be running out in the camp.
Okay.
So that any of the balance and the revenues will look a lot better if the contract stays in place.
Any other questions for the treasurer regarding the...
Going back, let's see. Oh, so going to page nine, this is an overview of your enterprise funds. It's pretty basic, and the net income there, it always, well, especially when you have big projects, capital projects in the enterprise funds, your net income's not going to look good on this page, but just remember that when year end comes, the expense of the capital's included on this page, but when we finish the year, it gets converted to an asset, or if it's not finished, it gets converted to construction in progress and gets pulled out of the expenses. So this page, it gives you an idea of what the revenues are, what the expenses are, and that's about it. As far as their overall situation, it's, it won't need explanation here.
Page 15. Jim, I'd like to go back a little bit, but we're looking for balance of 800 plus thousand, and we're dropping that by 48. Can the county sustain, so is this something we'll look forward next year?
Well, part of that is because of the contract with the county that this dropped, and...
That's a fund balance drop.
Yeah, it is. I mean, at all of this.
But you took the revenue out of that number.
Yeah. So if you put the revenue back in, that's going to go back up. Yeah.
And I think that's operating in the best cautious sense. Or have you heard anything that's what they're doing?
Yeah, I tend to go very concerned with that, so. As far as the street fund, it's, it pretty much status quo as it goes along, but we're keeping it, and it's been doing well, because this will be one of the first years that I can remember that I don't think I'm going to have to do any transfers of funds over into that fund this year. But you always want to make sure, because you never know whether gas revenues are going to be able to cover the wages and benefits. It's just a good precautionary. Oh, I guess the other thing I should also point out was that I did budget for contingency. This is the first year I've been able to do that in the line, but that's money that doesn't have to be spent, it's just there in case it's needed for budget, you know, budgets that might go off.
I think on the street department, very important, it's an amazing amount of money the RTC is sharing with the city, you know, the county and the city, like, over like a $409,000. I'd probably guess, I'll go back to my first tour, we've never seen hardly anything from the RTC. We've got public transit, it was about that one, 159,000, so the public transit commission is working right now. They're really generous to the city of Ely, and we're seeing that generosity in the improvements, which are a long time coming, but I think that's, they're really, you know, almost half a million dollars for the last couple, three years.
Yeah.
Well, they have more funding than that one. Is that, is that the diesel tax that got instituted? Is that going into the RTC?
That's not in these numbers at all yet.
I do know that that diesel, the bus over the RTC, I don't think even in a separate accounting fund. The thing to note is your public transit funding and your RTC funding, what shows is revenue, also shows is an expense. It is a wash, it should be a wash every year. The other small funds, like the courts, basically, that's at their discretion to use as needed, so I tried to just budget as much as I can out of that to give them a chance, if they have to spend it, it's there in the budget, so that's with them. I did, on the very last page, give you guys a copy of the capital expenditures for the year, and then just for informational purposes, for the street fire improvement fund and redevelopment fund, I've thrown in what the breakdown on that is there, too. The capital improvement fund, the street department was budgeted this year to get their head up, and they weren't able to get it delivered in time, so we voided that over for them. And everything else has just been requests that we felt we could handle it in the improvement fund. And when we go to the enterprise funds, when BJ brought to your attention that we had a change order for those water connections across Great Lakes Boulevard that we added to the end-up projects, and he said that we threw it in, the thing is, what I didn't understand was, I thought the project was going to go into the next fiscal year, and once we finally talked and figured it out, this project that's being done now technically isn't done as of the end of June this year. The payment, confusion that BJ had gone into was that the payment's not going to be paid until probably, you said, April of next year?
Or summer here.
So he was thinking we needed a budget for that payment. We don't. We have to book it as an expense this year, and if we don't pay it, it goes in as like a pretty bad payout we avoid, so it's going to be booked that way. So that's why you will not see any capital project or the end-up projects in this year's budget, because he said the next phase will not start within this next budget period. Because all that expense is going to hit this year. And once again, the nice thing is, is it will be converted to an asset, so it's not going to hit our expenses, so we should be fine. Plus, the cash that we've been reserving away that is generated from the improvement, capital improvement fee for the building, that's all been reserved over in a restricted fund also, and we do have the cash available at this time to pay more rest of maybe to all of this first project.
Could you give us a recap in less than two minutes on revolving loan fund that we've done so far in redevelopment?
Yes.
And projecting anything for next year?
So right now, I have a possibility of two more loans going out before the end of this year, which taps out the 100,000 that we had budgeted.
In which fund?
The revolving loan.
Okay.
So what I did do was I put 10,000, I put one more 10,000 loan in the budget for next year, just based off of revenues that we should be getting back in on loan payments. But I pretty much, we tapped out that fund this year with all the loans and the possible loans that I'm being told we can still give out.
When you use the word tapped it out, you settle a loan, you settle a loan, we still have a good fund balance, but...
Well, basically, it drops your fund balance down to where you still have a fund balance, but you have to stay on the path. But I can't give any more loans out, because the funding just isn't even in yet.
Okay.
Until the payments build up enough to be able to give out.
And the redevelopment?
And the redevelopment, once again, we had some requests for that, for designing the last session of burial plots at the cemetery, and just...
Oh, I probably get confused. The loans you put out to redevelopment?
Oh, the loans with them?
Yes.
All right. I think there was, what did I say, there was in there? I think there's four loans in there, but the rest of that, but, put over there. In fact, with what we're expecting, the expense is why I have an augmentation to add another 10,000 to cover that expenses, because I had an additional revenue over what was budgeted on, to augment that. So this year's, we've got four loans in there, but that's done as far as being able to use that this year. Now, as you can see on that last page, I did put some, you know, the sanitary, the city hall, but then I did loans slash improvements, so we still have ability next year to give out some loans that's needed to.
Again, on that page, capital projects expenditure, where the top four lined up, you know, the spelling of two, you know. Oh, now I think it's great. Thank you.
You're supposed to... All right, is there any other questions?
I got one question, and I think you've got it covered here. And just a quick look at that, I know with that discussion with you and your staff, we, our pickup fleet is about wore out. You know, we got almost some city Las Vegas for a hundred bucks, $10, so I see there is several, you know, I see our public works directors truck sitting in front of a repair shop for four or five days at a time.
Yeah. And as you can see, with his, we'd be splitting between the parks and cemetery, but actually, yeah, he's sitting near them, he trucks, so we threw that in there, and then...
That's 30,000 fueling?
Yes, it's, you know, the alternative that was left, you know. And then, and then, of course, like I said, the street department is supposed to get one this fiscal year, and we're just not physically able to do it.
That's a district roll over, that's all right, too.
Any other questions? These have gotten a little better over here. Thanks for your work.
Yeah.
Would that, would that obtain a motion on this side?
I'd like a motion to approve the budget passed along to the final.
Motion to approve, that's on our way.
I'll say that.
Second from Councilman Flankis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing is over. I will move on to item eight, item for discussion, possible action, we have the newly city council, the consent agenda, we have minutes per minute, 22, and bills remain 20. Are there any corrections or questions on either page? If not, I will entertain a motion to revoke.
So much.
Okay. Councilman Beecher, second from Councilman Alworth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing is over. I will move on to TB's business. Mayor Roberson, discussion for possible action, retroactive approval of support letter to the governor's office of economic development. Go ahead to select the north-eastern Nevada Regional Development Authority and RDA as a regional development authority. RDA is outlined in the Nevada revised statute, NRS 231.009, and utilize them for economic development services as requested by RFP 21-152601. So it's a time-sensitive letter. Motion to approve, Councilman... Speaker, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Councilman Flankis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing is over. Item two, Mayor Roberts, in discussion for possible action, approval of comment letter to Nevada State Historic Preservation Office, Shippow, regarding the area potential effect for the White Pine Forest storage project. I believe you have a draft there for that.
I'm confused. There are two different letters.
There are. The first one was submitted, which is based upon these letters we had submitted. Looking at that, I wanted to make sure we got a draft that was pointing to the issues that Shippow was going to be looking at, which is the second one you got. They're all drafts. We can approve one or the other, we can both insert again.
So as far as the sec, I much prefer the second draft, but in that third, in that, I guess, second paragraph, is fighting with the city, we've got this project that will have a negative effect on historic resources. Can we know what will? Can we change that to may?
We can certainly do that. I go all the way to the other, because I don't want to tell the people at Shippow how to do their job. They're the ones doing it, so maybe probably more appropriate there.
There are also two more wills down on the second to last line of that paragraph as well.
And I would support that change. I'm sure it will have an effect, you know, one way or the other. The request in this letter is to make sure that whatever effect there is will be mitigated.
Sure. Yeah, and I think the rest of it is worded well. I just, you know, we're, it's an unknown at this point. All of it is, you know. I would definitely agree with that.
Any other comments or questions on that? Would you like to make a motion for those corrections?
I would like to approve.
Motion by Councilman Beecher with the change of from will to may. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Second from Councilman Alworth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item three, Mayor Roberts, in discussion for possible action, approval for city of Ely to elect citizens to attend the Nevada League Cities and Municipalities 2021 Lead Congress, June 16 through the 18th, 2021. They're having this in Elko. Is that correct? Yes. Who wants to go? Oh, come on. I will be making an effort to attend. I definitely have to obviously say that, so. If any other council members would like to go, I can just listen to the direction. Jennifer, do you plan?
There's a possibility I could get away. I'll just have to, maybe we can discuss later so that Ely always has coverage or whatever, if you're going with portion of it, maybe I could...
I think that's on statute, probably be obligated to go.
To go.
The council members are certainly involved.
Okay, I would tend to believe say that I could possibly, and at least a portion.
So I guess the motion would be, sort of, to the mayor, and at least one council member?
Sure. Only have a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Alworth. Motion by Councilman Beecher. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You haven't forgotten that mic, have you?
Item four, Councilman Spirit, discussion for possible action, approval of draft priority list for St. Louis American Rescue Plan, Monday. You have a draft in your information package here with some very good suggestions, one that I would also encourage the council to consider would be maybe to put some towards a public, a public campaign of some sort for vaccinations, because getting as many young people vaccinated prior to the school year starting next year, I think is critical for our community. Once again, not making people get vaccinated, putting information out there, encouraging them to, I think would be good.
That'd be good. It's allowed, of course, and that's part of the government. If you look at that, this is just, the mayor asked us to put together some ideas, and it went through there. The first thing that struck me was infrastructure, the entire amount of money, which we're not sure yet. I think we're still going to get about 3.6, and it'll both be in two payments, and we have...
Do you know when they nail it, amount now? I keep...
Well, they're trying to get it down, and I've seen the county had to nail it down 1 million, yeah, 80, 1 million, 800, something like that, right to the pennies afterward.
Those women are safe, they're somewhere you're supposed to be able to sign on, somehow.
They went back into, was it two, three and a half ago, they wanted our final budget, and this can be now based on 75% of what our actual budget was prior to here, the whole budget, and we haven't got that number locked in yet, but we're pretty sure that's worth coming in at. The good part about that is, even though we get it in two payments, hopefully June 11th of this year, June 11th of next year, but they can, from what I understand, all the stuff they're going to, they can actually state and pull that work at least another 30 days or longer than that, so somewhere between, I think, a June 11th or July 11th, you're going to have to send a check for that. The good news is that we have until December 31st, 2024, to expand it, so we have a long time to work on this, and if the patch should move on, the letter will be, so this is just ideas, you've requested that, I think it's good ideas in there. We didn't bring any numbers to them until we come back, and at that time, we'll talk about, a lot of things are good, we thought that the funding would be better for some of these areas in here, to grants instead of, they can do quite a...
Sure.
Everybody's helping to do this thing, having grant process, wanting to know what the numbers are, how to reach for individual projects, and then having grant projects going to apply for, and then we have track of how they work there, one way to get, but that's for a further day.
So, so are we today discussing what order this needs to go in, or we're just approving here's and here's?
We're just trying to get ideas together, because the sooner we start talking about it, the sooner we can start developing some of this.
See, the first paragraph, all ideas are welcome, this is just, add two, this is the wish list, and if you've got some wishes to go on, like the mayor just did, absolutely, just look it in there until we're on there, because...
Well, and one thing I mentioned, I noticed in one of these webinars, or some meeting, I forget which one I was in, about this, they did encourage a session for public input on these funds, so having a hearing where the public could come forth with some ideas they'd like to see funded under this was something I suggested, and I think I have ideas.
Sure.
But I think these are all good suggestions, and I have one on there that I'd like to add, if there's anything the council would like to add, or top priority difference to do, I think, I think this will be a recurring thing for the next while that we need to keep discussing.
December 31st, 2024.
It's going to be spending this time, so, yeah.
You ever take a couple?
Thank you.
You have to, I mean, thanks for the mic. One thing I noticed on this list is, again, we could use every dime for infrastructure, but they're giving back to the community and the ideas here, you know, whether it's the employees, the businesses, they're looking at speeding up their internet and phone system, we're going to hopefully support the Aurora Boys and Girls Club, the cash program, you know, and the small businesses, restaurants. To me, this money's a gift to the city, which we're giving back to the city, the majority of it, and again, again, like, you're walking the shelf, you've always got good ideas, come up with them, and when the money comes down, then we'll sit there and deal the cards and see how it turns out.
Yeah, this list looks really comprehensive, and, I mean, looks fantastic to me. I missed it, I guess, on, when I was doing my research on the backup, so I, this is the first time seeing it, I apologize for that, but, yeah, it's wonderful. I think adding the cash program in there, they did so much while our schools were closed down to feed these kids who, you know, didn't get lunches because they weren't going to school, so, I mean, that's, that's great, and...
Actually, cash is a misspell on that, to anchor in, but your organization doesn't take that.
Right, yeah, but...
It's against child orders, they're just eating like a cash, but...
Right, but no, I think this, this looks wonderful, and I think the addition of the, of the vaccination awareness is, is good as well, so, good job, guys.
I would like to, I didn't tell my turn up there, that's why you didn't see it.
Oh, okay, okay.
So on the side, I suppose we can either take over, continue discussion would be an option, or approve of this, or if the council would like to...
Like you said, it's more of a...
Yeah, keep, yeah, keep sending them down to Jennifer, somebody's going to get this going, and when it comes, we want to be able to jump around, after we do the rules.
Or, so, I think going forward, it'd be good to schedule in one order, meetings, like I said, hearing for the public to provide input, but maybe the council would like to consider either forming some kind of committee, they can do some research on cost amounts, start putting it up in the paper, make some statements like that, maybe that's something we can put on the agenda for our next meeting, but just fleshing out, but this is going to take some logistical planning, but none of us want to do, but it needs to be done as fast as possible, so.
I think something on the project, that, you know, that I, the priority, one thing that I believe that we discussed by depth, there are these here changes, that I think our employees is number one, and we can be, to that, track out some way to make that so we can get that number pavered down, and then just start preparing down from there, would be my idea.
So if we can... So if we could have maybe a motion for tabling for continued discussion on this and on the next agenda, we'll have a link for forming some logistical committee that the council considered.
Okay.
Putting, do you like to move that one?
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson, am I allowed to speak? I would like to make a suggestion if I might be able to, on, would it be possible to add? It's Marianna.
Marianna, we're going to have a hearing here in the future where we'll take those comments, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. No, you didn't give a motion.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
A motion to table, we're to continue discussion on the side. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Councilman Spear, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll continue that. Item five, Councilman Spear, Councilman Alworth, discussion only, update on board efforts on behalf of the city.
We had a regular Monday meeting with them, everything is still at standstill, we were, like we mentioned in the last report, we were eleventh, they qualified, we had to ask somebody, disqualified or lower their run to get into the top ten, but now